I got it.
See some angle in there.
This is the official timekeeper, right?
We just need new batteries.
That's what it is. Do I need to tell Charlie since he's not focused on me probably? Well, I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'd like to thank everyone for attending tonight. In addition to a number of other agenda items, this is also the organizational meeting of the Board of Commissioners. So until there is a chair elected for the upcoming year, I will handle the agenda items. So the first one on tonight's agenda is to call to order and then we'll rise please and we'll say the pledge of allegiance and then it'll be followed by our invocation. So please join me.
I am the United States of America and to the republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to, before we have our invocation, just read sentences, paragraphs. But a prayer will now be offered by Pastor Michelle Foster Beckerle. I hope that is correct. To summarize the work of the board and to reflect upon the shared ideas and common ends before we embark on the business of the county. No one is required to participate and members of the public are free to join the meeting after the prayer or leave the meeting during the prayer. No member of the public will be treated differently based on whether you participate in the prayer for the board. Ms. Beckerle.
Let us pray. For the beauty of this day, O God, we give you thanks and for the ways you call us to your work in this world, we offer to you our praise. We pray that tonight our hearts might be open and our spirits might be receptive to your wisdom among us. Grant us courage to lead and act with grace and to seek your kingdom always. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Next item of business is the approval of the agenda. And I am not aware of any changes with the exception of general fund budget amendment number four, which I believe is at everyone's desk. So I would entertain a motion to adopt the budget with the approved change.
Motion to approve is amended.
A motion, do we have a second? Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's five to zero. Next item is the approval on the minutes from the eight sixteen work session, the eight nineteen nine twenty meeting, the ten four work session, the ten four, ten seven, and ten eighteen board meetings. Hear a motion to accept those minutes? Have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's five to zero. It's the time of the meeting where we will now entertain public comment. If there is anyone in the audience that would like to speak at this time, please come forward. Seeing none, I will close the public comment time. At this point, we will elect a chair for the upcoming year. With that in mind, I would ask if there are any nominations for the chair position for the upcoming year at this time.
Nominate.
Have a motion and a second for Mr. Bill Osborne. Any discussion on that? All those in favor of Mr. Osborne becoming the chair for the upcoming year, please raise your right hand. Four and, so you're abstaining? Okay, four to nothing. With one abstention, congratulations. Chairman Osborne, the meeting is yours.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate the vote of confidence there and to do the best of my ability to perform this job. Move on down and next up the election of the vice chair. Open the floor for nominations for vice chair. I'll second to you. Question? Have a motion and a second for Bobby. If not, in favor, raise your hand. Four to oh. Next up is appointing clerk of the board. This Drew Todd. Your nomination.
I would make that motion to reappoint Mr.
Have a motion here, a second? Motion, second, any discussion? Not in favor, raise your hand. Name for the county attorney, appoint the county attorney. Need a motion? A motion and a second for Ms. Heather Klein, the county attorney. Any discussion? Not in favor, raise your hand. Five to. We'll move on down. Review and revise board appointments. We'll go through these. First off, agriculture advisory board. That's currently being held with Bobby Irwin.
I'd like to stay if possible.
Objections?
Do we need to boot on these or just move on? If no objections, we move on. Bobby, be on agriculture advisory board. Library board is myself, Bill Osborne. I'd stay on that unless somebody else wants it. If none, I'll stay on that. Group homes board, Mr. John Irwin.
I'm on that one and I will remain unless someone else wants it.
Objections? He's on that board. Appalachian district health board. That's currently held by Bobby Irwin.
I'd like to stay if possible.
Any objections? Bobby. Ridge RC and D, that'd be myself again. That's the RC and D board in Boone. I'll see if, unless somebody else wants it. Counsel on aging, Michelle Luthman.
That's incorrect. I took a counsel on aging on that and have been making the meetings. I will take it unless someone else wants it.
Meeting. Chamber of.
When do they meet?
They meet on Wednesdays.
I have a conflict.
On stays on the council of aging. Court security and renovation committee, Mr. Bobby Irwin.
I'd like to stay on there, John.
There's two. One, sorry. Bobby and John both.
Yeah.
Okay, you two stay on that board. Extension is advisory leadership council. Mr. Bobby Irwin.
I'd stay. I haven't been very good at attending. They have their conflicts sometimes with mine schedule, but I intend to make every meeting possible.
Good.
That's okay.
Bobby, it is. Fire grounds board.
I'd like to stay with you.
Myself and Bobby, Bobby Irwin.
Objections?
I'd like to stay on that one. Objections, those two stays. Fire commission, myself, Bill Osborne again. I'd entertain staying on that unless somebody else did. If none, I'll stay. Country council of government, that's myself again. I think that's the chair has the.
Has the chair.
Position. High country pro advisory committee, Michelle Luthman. Objections, okay. Country workforce development board, Mr. John Irwin.
Stay on it if no one else wants it.
Here and then? John is. Home and community care block grant advisory committee, Commissioner Mark Evans. Okay. Objections, don't hear any more of him. Yes. Juvenile crime prevention council, Commissioner Mark Evans. Objections? Evans. Again, the council economic development board, Michelle Luthman.
I'd like to stay.
Objections? She'll stays. Local emergency planning committee. That's myself again, Bill Osborne. I'll stay or if anybody else wants it, either way.
Library board? Okay.
Okay, health advisory board. Commissioner John Irwin.
Stay on it if nobody else wants it.
Objection? Yes. Northwest regional library board. Commissioner Michelle Luthman. I'll take that. Partnership for children board, Commissioner Mark Evans. Any objections? I could use social service board, Commissioner Michelle Luthman. Objections? It is. Any Carolina water authority, Mr. Carter and Commissioner John Irwin.
I'll stay if no one wants it.
Objections? Yes. Veterans advisory board, Commissioner Bobby Irwin.
I'd like to stay unless somebody else.
Objections? Yes. Joint committee with school board. Mark Evans and Bobby Irwin.
I'd like to stay with Mark if he wants to.
With me.
Objections? That's Mark and Bobby. Board of evacuation and review, that's the whole board.
I need Rita Miller.
Rita Miller. It is. High country.
Wait, 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 what's that?
High country RPO rural transportation advisory committee. I'm on that myself. Be glad to serve unless somebody else wants it. Dominating committee. Health, Bill Osborne and Commissioner John Irwin.
I'll stay.
Unless somebody else wants it. Insurance committee, Bobby Irwin and Commissioner Michelle Luthman.
I'd like to stay.
Objections? Me, Michelle. Declaration committee, Commissioner Michelle Luthman, Commissioner Bobby Irwin.
I'd like to stay.
Objections? Dale and Bobby. Ordinance committee, Commissioner John Irwin, Commissioner Mark Evans.
I'll stay, but I'm not going to fight anybody for it.
Objections? That concludes. Includes all of the. What was the rules or procedures? But it has any changes they want to.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, under organization of the board, page thirty in our handout. Even number years, meeting place. We agreed that we would meet at eighteen hundred hours, six P.M. on the first Monday. That time needs to be changed.
That's the objection that these things are up on. Change it up on.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to know what the minimum time requirement is. Would make that recommendation that we change that to 48 hours, sir.
Along with that recommendation?
Yes.
So that needs doing. Have you objections to that? Thing else?
Page 33. Under agenda, I would like included in there, the agenda packet shall include the agenda documents and any proposed ordinances or amendments be provided to the committee members 48 working hours prior to the meeting.
Objections, please? What's the?
Mr. Chairman.
Forty-eight working hours prior to the meeting. The words, we have to have them on Wednesday. That gives us Thursday and Friday to ask for any materials from the county administration. If we get it on Friday, it's kind of hard to ask you to produce something Saturday and Sunday.
May I ask a question in reference to that? As opposed to put it in hours, do you want to just identify it by the Wednesday prior to?
That would be fine, as long as there's two working days.
That way we're not 9:30 on Thursday morning. It closes business on Wednesday prior to the meeting. That's when it goes out.
I have no objections to that, Mr. Chairman. My next recommendation is on page 37. Minutes shall be kept at all board meetings and I would add and available at the next meeting not to exceed 30 days after a meeting. Tonight, we approved meetings minutes from August, September, October. I can't even remember what I had for dinner last night, much less what transpired in August, September and October.
Everybody good with that? Any discussion about? Objection in the procedures?
A motion that we table the vote on the rules of procedure until the next meeting to give ample time for the changes to be made, sir.
A motion here, a second?
Second.
No discussion? All on favor, raise your hand. Do that review of the procedures. Move down, next up, the presentation of the board, Allegheny Rescue Squad.
Good evening.
Good evening.
With the time you allow me to come here today and just give you a brief summary. This is one of the times we ain't asking for money, so it's a good day. First of all, let me start off by saying we greatly appreciate your support. I want to make sure that we try not to mislead you in any way. The report that I handed out in front of you is, we got a system at the Rescue Squad and a lot of fire departments are going to it now, it's called Active 911. It is a CAD system, the same thing that dispatch has, and actually dispatch activates this and it sends us a different alert on that app on your iPhone, your smartphone. So when you look at this, I've backed it up all the way to January to the day. You'll see that 98% of all calls received through the CAD through Active 911 is rescue EMS-related. You'll see down on the alert type, uncategorize. That's how it comes into dispatch as other. It could be a lift assist, a search, something that don't fit the rescue or the drop down box, so they just hit other or unknown. If you flip your page, that's your busiest time that we have for calls at the Rescue Squad. It's all broke down in military time. Kind of gives you an idea of where we stand and what we're seeing and how many calls we're running. I just, I can pull up the report. I can even go in depth and show you the busiest address, but it's going to be the Rescue Squad base because of active standbys. My mission is to provide the best possible, best service possible to this community. Our rescuers strive to always do their best to face each day with pride, honor, skill and integrity. We understand that very few professions in the United States allow a total stranger to walk into a home at 3 o'clock in the morning, have instant credibility and have a parent handler sick child over. That fact, we cannot tarnish. Our goal therefore is to always maintain strict professionalism. We recognize each day as a training day, not only to the service of our community, but also help to ensure that everyone goes home. Allegheny Rescue Squad covers 237 square miles and over 11,000 citizens, the largest response zone in Allegheny County. I wish I could say that we have enough personnel every day, but that's simply not the case. However, one of those challenges that we will continue to work toward is more volunteers. From 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM Mondays through Fridays, it's hard to cover for the paid EMS services that we, when they are tied up on calls or transports. Most people do not realize that we are all 100% volunteers. Some work five, six days a week at their jobs somehow, but somehow we get it done. This year, our volunteers at Allegheny Rescue have already put in over 2,500 man-hours and have been dispatched over 1,200 calls for service. Over 300 active standbys for the county EMS, 78 which were motor vehicle accidents, 12 requiring extraction equipment, 11 county searches for missing persons, four mutual aid searches, one in Patrick County, Virginia that required our high angle rescue team, three water rescues on the New River that I'm pleased to announce were successful. I have to tell you that one of the reasons that we're able to provide that level of service is that not, that we are not just EMTs, paramedics or technical rescuers, but we have great volunteers. I want the community to understand that this is your Rescue Squad. It's not ours. We entrust, you entrust us to take care of it and we do our best to do that and stand ready to serve you. Understand that the citizens that built this facility, we simply do the best to try to staff it and to provide the service at no charge. At the present time, we have 33 members at Allegheny Rescue Squad. Of those members, there are 10 paramedics, seven EMTs, one advanced EMT and 14 technical rescuers. If you noticed in your letter last year that we mailed out, I vowed that the donations that we received would upgrade our technology and improve housing for the equipment to help meet the needs of this county. I am pleased to say that if you have been by 61 Trojan Avenue, you could see construction taking place. Last weekend, we was able to purchase a new light rescue truck from FDNY that will suit the needs of our equipment even better. And I could tell you, it's a long drive in a rescue truck from New York City. We can, we only rely on, we only rely on county and town allocations and fundraisers to support Allegheny Rescue. Allegheny Rescue does not receive any fire tax money. We did not receive any COVID relief money from state, federal or local government. We rely on our letter drive from the citizens each year to help keep the doors open of this great county. The response last year was overwhelming from property owners and citizens of this county, and for that I am truly blessed. We hope to even top that this year as some have already seen the letter and some have already donated. In addition to all that, we got to save people's lives day in and day out. These members, once they join, already are walking into a situation that will get more calls for service than any other department. You have to have a lot of know-how in a short period of time. In closing, I'd like to say, I love this county. I love the people. I love what it means for so many. It means hope, freedom and opportunity. I will undertake to protect that community. I will undertake to protect the lives of all and for the opportunity, I say thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, Jason. That's a good report. We appreciate you guys, appreciate all you stand for, all you do.
Has got any questions? What impact do you feel that the opening of the assisted living facility is going to have?
I got mixed emotions on it because at one time I heard they was getting their own transport, but I don't know if that's true. That's something that, you know, that would help out everybody if the hospital had their own transport, but. No, but the growth. I heard that they may be getting their own transport. I'm not 100% sure. I've never spoke with anybody down there to verify that.
First I've heard of. That EMS is feeling that they're going to have an impact.
Oh, very. If, if, if they don't have their own transport, it's going to double impact us because we only have two county paid EMS services. And I'm going to stand by every day, every day.
We may have to look in.
Bobby?
I just want to be sure the public knows when you make a call and use some of your supplies, you cannot charge for those supplies.
The charge.
And that's a big expense to you.
Big expense. It was 14, a little over $14,000 last year. I have cut it down to 89 and some change this year.
Last year was 14,000. So far, this year it's eight.
Twenty-eight, nine.
And you still got six and a half months to go. You may be exceeding what it was last year.
It's a possibility. If, if COVID would ever die out, it'd help us.
When you're talking money, that's a net loss to you.
Yeah. Fuel, people, I mean, any of these volunteers, they're at their job, so not every employee is going to let them take off and lose money, you know, so.
The other part, now is the hospital is, are they working with you now?
They are.
On doing some resupplying of some things?
When we, when we transporting our ambulants, they will restock or resupply everything except narcotics and IVs. But to use that stuff, it takes a paramedic on my truck or our truck. The issue that we're running into is not, we don't do that many transports, is like these first responders respond to a call, they'll use equipment out of their own personal bag. Well, they can't take their own personal bag to the hospital to restock it, so they bring it back to the station and restock it.
And then, I think you and I have talked about some of this, the COVID money. And I think you just said you didn't get anything.
Right.
And I, I think that's something the commissioners and the county manager need to look at is understanding. Why we, they didn't qualify for some of the COVID money. That, that could have been something that would have really helped them, but I think that's something that we need to look at and to under, I didn't understand it.
I still don't understand.
And I'm, I still don't really understand it, but I'm, I'm working on it. Last year, when we went through the budget with the budget committee and rest of the commissioners, there was a, my understanding, there was a consensus to really step up this next budget to try to, try to see what we could do to help you as much as possible.
And another thing like, and maybe you can help me understand this, is like when we go on active standby, so the county, both county units are out on calls or transports or whatever, and we're on active standby. In my eyes, if two of my medics go to the squad and they got the next county call, technically they're a county employee. I don't know how that works. They're a volunteer organization, but technically we're primary county backup. I understand all that.
Thank you.
Go.
Thank you.
Just want to say thank you for what you do and all your volunteers. This year I had a, something happened with my own family member and even though the county EMS came, some of your volunteers came too. And that is, that really means the world to, you know, to some family member in their hurting. Just wanted to say that I appreciate you and I would hate to think what, what would happen if we didn't have you. Going to have to take.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jason. Move on down, general business, this is Rita Miller.
Good evening. The first thing I have for you this evening, I have two requests for solid waste fee release that are in your packet. The first one was Saddle Ridge Campground, well, actually they're both Saddle Ridge Campground. The first one, the last name was McClelland. He said that they did not have camper on this parcel for one or more nights. And I guess you see the note says they've not had a camper on lot at Six Azelia Court since October of 2020. The new owner, the new owners of Six Azelia Court will put a camper on the lot. So the McClellands are asking for release of the solid waste fee for 2020 and we would leave it on for 2020, for 2021. We will leave it on for 2022 for the new owners and it would be up to them to let us know how they're using that lot.
All right. What's the, what's the board?
Have a question, Mr. Chairman. What's the last date to apply?
Last day you can appeal is December the 31st.
They're within the appeal time. I will make a motion that we approve both, Mr. Chair.
Motion to approve both these. Do I hear a second? Dale, second to that. Any further discussion? Not on favor, raise your hand. Five to vote.
Next thing I have is a request to approve a late application from Russell Von Wald. I believe Mr. Von Wald is in the audience tonight. Was not able to turn the application in on time. It's another one of the veterans service where we did not get the paperwork in in time to get it turned in. So is asking for approval of his late 2021 application for veterans disability exclusion.
Mr. Chairman, I note that it was signed by the physician on November the 9th supporting the application request and I will make a motion that we accept.
A motion to accept, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Not on favor. Five to vote.
The last thing I put in your packet this evening, just, just for consideration, I'm not asking for a vote and then also to give Attorney Klein a chance to look at it, we've had, I've came before the board previous years asking for a definition of good calls and late application. We've never defined.
We've never defined that, but this year we have approved more, um, late applications than I recall ever doing so in the past. And, um, of course, citizens are deserving of their exclusions if they qualify. I guess my biggest concern, um, or thing we may want to look at is just not knowing about that program. So, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but ownership and property means you're supposed to know the law that around that property as well. Um, so I would just like to ask the board to consider defining good cause for upcoming requests of approval on late applications. So I'd be glad to answer any questions now, later, and, um, if Attorney Klein could look over that as well, and I can bring it back to a later meeting, if you need me to do so.
Work session?
Certainly could be a part of the work session.
Good way to, next work session.
Motion to place on the work session agenda.
So moved. Motion to place on the work agenda, do you hear a second? I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Five of them.
Thank you very much.
Verification, that would be your first meeting in January, four o'clock, work session.
Have a more nightly meeting, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Twenty-two holiday calendar.
And I'll take that if I could. Um, in, in your packets, you have a listing of the approved state holiday schedule for upcoming year. Last year, we started the process by adopting the state holiday schedule, and I believe that has made things simpler all the way around when trying to identify the closings, and I would ask that you consider this, once again, uh, state holiday schedule for the upcoming year.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair, as presented.
A motion to approve states' holidays, do you hear a second?
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? All in favor? Five of them. For Carolina DOT 93 and 221, Commissioner Bob Irwin.
Going back to, uh, the DOT changing the speed limit on 93 and 221, we've had several meetings with DOT, I believe, starting August the 16th, when Joseph Woody appeared, he was a regional, Western Regional Engineer, and he answered, told us why, how that came about. Then September the 20th, we had Wayne Atkins and Daniel Adams. They appeared before the board, and they said they could, the way that I understand the minutes that we just approved, they could look at reviewing those recommendations. Then on October the 4th, Mike Pettyjohn came before the board, and he stated that 55 was the statutory speed limit for the state of North Carolina until it's changed in certain areas. Mike was going to have his team look at the matrix again about how that came about, and I think there's been some interest on the part of the commissioners to see what we can do next, see what's the next step, next level that we can go to, and see if we can appeal these, um, speed limits, these reductions in speed limits. And I don't want to open up a can of worms, but some of these places that they reduce the speed limit, those are the only straightaways on 221 to pass somebody. And then you go maybe a mile after the last 45, and you go into curve after curve after curve, and speed limits still 55. You go up through Ash County, speed limit's 55 all the way between here and there. So I, I'm still confused how they picked out these few stretches on 93 and 221, and I don't think that it's, uh, it's not acceptable to me to just listen to a few people and say, well, that's the way it is. I think we ought to be able to keep going up to their chain of command and get to somebody that can say, yes, it's possible, they could go back and look at it and come back with, uh, something more reasonable. All ahead.
Okay. I certainly support that myself. It's, uh, well, I've thought a lot about this, and it just don't make a lot of good sense. I mean, 221 has been widened the right smart, good road up through there.
Mm-hmm.
Now 93, it's not any wider, it stayed the same, but, uh, limit on 93 is 45 all the way.
But on 221, you hit two places to pass, just after Bobby Joe Gambles and up through, uh, Tom Atwood's, that's our only place to pass on that part of the road, and it's a passing lane. But it's hard to pass somebody at 45 miles an hour and not break the speed limit. Uh, and people around here, they know, when they come to a curve, they got to slow down. And one of the statements by one of these gentlemen was, well, we're trying to make it safe for people who don't know the road. Well, that's what a steering wheel's for, is to drive down the road in a, in a safe manner, and for 60-some years, it's been 55 miles an hour. So there, again, I just think we need to revisit and not let this thing die down.
Right. We'll keep working on it. Thank you, Bobby. Next is Vaya County Commissioner, Advisory Board Department, Mr. John Irwin.
Uh, the, on January the 1st, Vaya will incorporate Cardinal. And in doing so, there are going to be 21 voting directors in the new board. Uh, according to the advisory board that we've been notified, the Board of County Commissioners for each county within the designated region shall appoint up to two members to the regional board, one of which must be an elected county commissioner, and one of whom may be either a county commissioner, county manager, Department of Social Services Director, Public Health Director, or law enforcement representative. So we have a limited, uh, scope that we can go to for board members. We have already selected Lisa Osborne, uh, to be on the Region Three Board, which will comprised of Alexander, Allegheny, Ash, Avery, Caldwell, McDowell, Rowan, Watauga, and Wilkes Counties. Uh, it is logical, since I am on the Vaya, uh, committee, that I assume that slot, and I will unless somebody else wants it, or involve travel, because I believe the meetings are going to be held quarterly in Hickory, North Carolina.
I think, I used to be on the Vaya Board for, for years, and I believe at that time we had one commissioner that served on that local board, but we had a different commissioner that served on the big board.
That's correct.
I, I think that was a history. Michelle's been in, in this mental health issue for years and years. Uh, I don't know if she would be interested in doing something like that, but I think it's good to have two different, two different viewpoints coming back to the board. The, uh, the big board, that's what I call this board, the big board.
The executive.
They run, I think, the Vaya, the budget and everything, so.
They may have in the past, but this is a complete reorganization.
Yeah.
Because they're, they're absorbing Cardinals Counties and everything else, so, uh, the only thing I can go by this, and if, if Michelle would like it, that's well, but she would assume that, uh, committee assignment also.
I just, uh, I just like, you know, if, if possible, to have two different views coming back. I don't know if she'd be interested, but I think she would be a, you know, between the two of you, be two strong voices coming back to us.
Well, uh, so you don't, are you, are you saying that we will not appoint Lisa Osborne, or we're going to rescind her appointment? Because we've already voted to put Lisa Osborne on there.
I think this one's just talking about the commissioner, isn't it?
Well, you've got two. We've already appointed one, so it would be the commissioner.
I think, John, what he's talking about is you're on the advisory.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. You can have two commissioners, or you can have one commissioner, or you can have one, uh, county manager, Department of Social Services. We've already, we've already voted and assigned Lisa Osborne, she agreed to serve on this board, so that fills one slot. Which commissioner would you like to go?
Something being voted on by this board?
Okay.
Chairman?
Sir?
I would, I have served on the executive committee prior to the reorganization, and they were doing, first meetings I went, I traveled to Asheville, and then we became Zoom. Would like that they're going to come, or going forward, so that could save some travel if you're interested. I'm going to need you.
We got a motion.
Motion.
I'm, I'm, be two different commi, school Vaya Board, or do they have to be the same commissioner?
There is only one region. That executive board, I don't know if it's still going to exist or not. The only thing that I was looking at was Region Three, because it takes the commissioners to assign two people there. That is the requirement, is the two. Now, how they are going to meet, we don't know, because this doesn't come into effect until one January. Whenever they have their first meeting, it will make determination whether they're going to meet via Zoom until they can meet in person. Uh, we can't make it. We've got, and this is, we have to do it in December. We have to designate two people. It could be two commissioners, it could be one commissioner and one member from the departments that I, I gave you. We discussed Lisa Osborne, and, uh, I didn't see on the, uh, agenda that we were voting on that, so if, if we want to vote, uh, which commissioner wants to go on there, that's fine with me. If you want two commissioners and leave Lisa off, but if we do that, now we've got a major department that cert, that Vaya Services without a voice.
The board we're talking about's the governing board.
No, this is the regional board. The governing board will be above the regional.
For these two?
We got a motion for Lisa to serve as one, and Michelle to serve as.
I second that motion on Lisa.
Okay. That's second. What's for?
Motioning. Motion was for.
Motion is for both of them. Both together, do them individually? Questions together, okay? Lisa and Michelle. Is that a second?
Withdraw my, uh, second.
Got a motion for Lisa and, and Michelle, they're on the Vaya Board. Second. Second. Any discussion?
Uh, that's the, with the understanding that Michelle takes the committee, the Vaya Committee from me, relieved of that responsibility, committee assignment.
That's a separate.
You type up the motion, so I can be sure.
That's what my question, and commissioner, they're on both the local, regional, don't.
Makes no sense for one commissioner that's on the committee to make all the committee meetings, and then another commissioner to go to the region.
A question comes, Tom. Page 49, what are they talking about on there as being the governing board?
Uh, the governing board shall consist of at least 11 and not more than 21 voting directors. All voting directors must reside within the region. That is page 50, that's subparagraph one. That is your governing board. The regional boards will be for the regions and will answer to the governing board, is the way that I read it.
Help me out here a little bit. With Vaya's reorganization, now they're encompassing 31 counties, going to have the regular meeting in Asheville is.
We don't know. We don't know. That, that will be determined sometime after January, whenever this new board, see, this doesn't exist right now. January the 1st, it will come into existence, and then it's got to meet to determine how often it's going to meet and where it's going to meet. Now, the governing board will, will be, be from, if you'll go down to paragraph four, each of the regional boards shall appoint two of their members to serve on the governing board. So whoever is appointed to the regional board could be appointed to the governing board. So that would be dual-handed right there.
May I ask, may I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
I'm just going back to your appointments you did earlier in the meeting, and if you look at page 27, about four up from the bottom, you will see what is called the Vaya Health Advisory Board, and it provides a brief description of what that is, which Commissioner John Irwin was appointed to. Now, and I'm just trying to understand the wording, but if you look at item number four under C, it says, Vaya County Commissioner Advisory Board Appointment. This resolution is an advisory board resolution. I don't, I don't, I, I can read what the resolution says, but I don't know what the distinguishing difference between, on page 27 is versus page 49 and 50, because I only see advisory board listed for both.
That was my question.
So, and I, I don't mean this the wrong way, but we were talking about a governing board of some sort?
The advisory board goes away. That exists, the advisory board exists right now. January 1st, it goes away. It is replaced by regional boards.
Okay. So, so with that in mind.
The wording, yeah.
There, the. There, there really wasn't much need to appoint an advisory board member, because it goes away in January. We're only talking about a one-month appointment, if, if I'm understanding it correctly. So then it kicks in to this one, which goes to what we're calling the regional board, if I'm understanding it correctly. So you're not having, if I understand this, if the, if the advisory board on page twenty-seven goes away in January, there are no two voices that are being considered, because one board goes away, and page forty-nine and fifty's determination of a board takes its place. If I am incorrect, please tell me, but that's the way I just understood it.
I don't believe that you are incorrect, Ms. County Manager. I think we simply need to rename that board.
Me, it seems, and I don't know how many meetings are scheduled under the advisory board on twenty-seven, but we're in December, and it can't be many. But it does look like there is a newly formed board beginning in January that requires one commissioner and one of the other possibilities that were described. So from my perspective, and I'll defer to our attorney, because she, she is far more into it than I, I see no need to appoint one for twenty days for the advisory board that's going away, but to make the focus on the one that's coming in in January and move forward with it.
Except for one thing. We have to notify the VAIA board in December who the representatives are going to be for the regional advisory board.
That has nothing to do with the notification of what's on page twenty-seven. And please correct me if I'm wrong. I think you appoint one commissioner or two, and/or a, a member that was described to this regional board, and you're done. That, that's my understanding of it.
Forget about the advisory board, it's, it's gone.
Leaves in January, I don't know how that makes an impact.
Did you just say, John, they didn't have no meetings in December?
There's no meetings in December. The next meeting will be in January. And I assumption that we would morph into the regional board with the assignment. But now we do away with the advisory board, and I will second that motion.
Got this motion on the floor.
The motion, as I understand it, on the floor is to appoint Michelle Luffman and Lisa Osburn to the Region Three Advisory Board, which I have just seconded.
We got a motion and a second for Lisa.
I know that John-
Motion's been made. Just fight with it.
We got, we got a motion and a nomination and a second. Got a motion, second, for Lisa and Michelle to go on the VAIA board. Any further discussion? Not on favor, raise your hand. Hold over.
It's got to be fought.
Next is a resolution support for the heartbeat bill. Heartbeat bill. Drew, would you mind reading that resolution, Doris, please? Thank you, Drew.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Discussion about this? Would like, personally, I would like to hear a little more information out there of this ongoing topic. It's a, it's a touchy subject, and I think there's more information coming. It's just my personal thoughts on that. Read through some of it, and these, over the weekend, and I believe it's fourteen counties that signed on for this resolution. Yeah. It's, a lot of this information, too, is coming out of court systems, you know, it's in the court systems all across the country, the Supreme Court. And I just think that the citizens need to understand where we're at on this before we just jump in and make sure everybody's got the correct information about it. It's just my thoughts. To the board.
Certainly. Often struggled with. Thing in. Personal health. Constance. Formal than. Others and the family and the doctors, I had to. Think it. Treatment is really fair. After they're born.
It's true. I'd just like to see us give it a little time, maybe a month or whatever, and revisit at a later date, to see what other information does come out, and see how people, if they got interested in this, you know, and let the county people, before we just go vote and something. And have a motion. Before we got into discussion there. Got a motion on the floor to accept. Do I hear a second?
I save it.
Got a motion and a second. Further discussion?
And what's the, we accept the, accept the resolution.
I, I can understand everyone's reluctance to get in on this. Early in my career, was getting ready to deploy. My wife was four months pregnant. We packed up everything, because I was going to be gone for three months. She made it to Mount Airy. Gentleman that crossed three lanes of four-lane highway, the median, that struck my wife on the car door. The bumper crushed the door in on her chest. The bumper hit her face and shattered it. They put one hundred pieces of her skull back together to reconstruct her face. They took an hour to cut her out of the car. Only thing that she would say is, "I'm pregnant." As we lay there with no heartbeat for two weeks, waiting for her to abort that child. Miscarry. In Catholic, she didn't want an abortion, although that she was advised to have that abortion. It is a hard decision. Been there. Child lived to be forty-five years old. She was institutionalized from the age of fourteen. He attempted suicide seven times. He tried to kill her grandmother three, her mother four, me, three. Have a scar over my heart where she stabbed me. Couldn't have any more children after that. Always regretted it. I cannot take away the fact that each year, right-to-life are taken away from children. They can't speak. Have the wrong color hair, the wrong sex, they're aborted. Can't be afforded, they're aborted. Some people use abortion as a birth control tool. This is a question that ranks right up there with Solomon for me. But the basic question that I have to ask myself is, when does life begin? Maybe arbitrary, whenever a heartbeat starts. So I would support a heartbeat bill, so it's, it's, it's a point where we start. That's my personal preference, my personal beliefs. Made the decision based on our religious convictions. The doctors made their recommendation on their professional knowledge. Make a right one, I don't think we did. But we lived with it. Hope no one ever has to. Call the motion, Mr. Chair.
Motion, second, any further discussion? Not on favor, raise your hand. Would you do the honors one more time? This is resolution, individual freedom over personal vaccine status. Thank you, Drew. Here a motion to accept.
I moved.
Motion, second, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. It's a deadline. County Manager, Mr. Carter.
Chairman, members of the board, it's, it's that time again. And we are nearing six months of our current fiscal budget. And each year that I've been here, we've, we've established a deadline for departments to provide their summits for the upcoming year. This year, I would like to ask that we set that deadline as February the eleventh of 2022. That is roughly a week earlier than it was last year, but we are also identifying this deadline a month earlier than last year. So as, as you all have seen in the past couple of years, we, we begin this process early, we get that information worked out, we have ample time to, as Commissioner John Irwin would say, cuss and discuss the matters within the budget. And I would like to have the board's approval of setting that date, so we can notify accordingly.
Motion.
I move, second.
Motion, second, any discussion? All in favor? I move. Next, Ms. April Ham. Any amendment?
Evening. A couple of budget amendments for you. The first one is actually reimbursement for some earthquake repairs. We initially took part of this money out of the unappropriated fund balance, and that's where we would like to put it back in.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Motion here, second. Motion, second, Michelle, any further discussion? All in favor? I move.
Second one, I believe, was handed out beforehand to all the commissioners. This was kind of a last-minute fund, funds that came into DSS, is for links. It's to help the youth of the county, or certain youth that qualify for the county, in an amount of twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
Chairman, I have a question. The amendment explanation, reimbursement for earthquake repairs, is that something that-
I just didn't-
It should have been taken off?
Yes. It, it will say links for DSS before it's signed. It was a last-minute change that came in.
Move.
Second. Second, any further discussion? All in favor? Next is thrust resolution for deposit account, Ms. April Ham.
Basically, what we need to do is update our signers for our bank account. We need to remove one, and we need to replace her with, the assistant finance officer has changed, so we just need to replace that one. But it does require a resolution from the- But it does require a resolution from the board and updated signature cards.
Motion to approve the proposed resolution?
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? If not, on favor, raise your hand.
Thank you.
Request for qualification for a licensed engineer, Mr. Carter.
Hey, a little bit of fun part to the meeting. So, as everyone is aware, we, and I'll begin with 90 South Main. We have a completed facility study on that facility, and there has been identifications and descriptions made available. I believe in a previous meeting, this board authorized moving forward with what was option one, which was basically to remove the addition and then build back a suitable entrance way back into the facility. That's check one on the list. What I would like to do now is put out an RFQ or a request for qualifications for licensed engineer architects to submit to us, basically their qualifications, what makes them tick, what puts them in that status. What we would do with that, of course, is we would take them, we would review those, we would rank those accordingly, and then we begin talking in more detail with, hopefully, the selected one at first to begin negotiations on how we get to a finished product. This is basically the next step in line on getting to a design phase, which will then get us to a construction phase, which will then, at some point, get us to a completion phase. So, all of this information, I ran off trying to figure out things and learn all this great stuff, but if anyone's interested, this is all the procurement stuff that goes along with it, and it talks about everything from the Mini Brooks Act to a whole lot of other things, which I would happily say that I'm fairly versed in now. But my request tonight is for authorization from the board to allow me to put an RFQ out for qualifications for 90 South Main.
Being said, do I hear a motion? Motion second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Raise your hand.
Next one, it is, I think at this point, probably came to a lot of people's attention, that within the adopted state budget, there are funds for the courthouse here in Allegheny. Now, as far as an official notification, I haven't received that, but I have heard several words of mouth and that type notification. And again, trying to learn a little bit about the past, and some of you may have seen this. I happened on this November 9th, 2017 report that was called the Allegheny County Courthouse Propose Expansion. And that thing has more pages in it than I care to talk about, but I had a brief conversation with Commissioner Bobby Irwin earlier today, just to ask if, you know, because in that budget, there is a $2 million mark. Well, I've asked 20 different people what went into that $2 million mark, and I don't mean this wrong, but everybody's got an opinion. It may have needed this, or it may have needed that, and it probably needs this, but I didn't have a list. And if you all remember, a year and a half ago, I had about four days put together a list of what we were going to ask from the state, and there it was, and that still exists, by the way. There's no list for this. So, there's a lot of fluff and a lot of nice pictures and some humor, I guess, in it, but it doesn't tell me much. And after talking with Commissioner Irwin, I think, and please correct me, I think this may have been something that was talked about even before the $2 million amount, but more along the lines of when there was consideration of a whole different footprint for that courthouse. So, I was on a really high note, thinking, boys, I found something that I can use to help me in this search, and then when he burst my bubble, I more or less just printed off 40 pages for nothing. But what I would like to do again is, you know, if we're going to be eligible for these funds, and these are state-controlled funds, there is, as you know, there is a process to this. I do not want to use what someone thinks and someone thought. I would like to have a facility study, much like what we did on 90 South Main, by a licensed group, architect and engineer, to go in and look at that facility and make determinations on what we need. And if it turns out that it's windows and Sally ports and all that great stuff, so be it. But we can demonstrate that to the state, that we've had someone professionally look at it. Here's what we've came back with, and here's what we need to move towards. Now, this again is a first step. We get a facility study done, depending on how that goes, then we can look at design, then we can look at those type things. But there are limitations that come with these studies. There are thresholds. Right now, I couldn't tell you what a facility study is going to cost for that facility. I know what one costs for 90 South Main, it was under the threshold. This, I can't tell you. What I would like to do with this, again, is put out an RFQ for that purpose, so that we can talk with engineers and architects about the project and proceed in that direction. So, I have, this is a similar request to 90 South Main, but it is for a facility study as opposed to looking on down the road at step two for design on the project itself.
Hear a motion? Bobby got a question here.
To do this study is going to cost us some money.
Yes, sir.
Where's that money going to come from? Out of our, where's it going to come from?
The hope, and that's what I can tell at this point, the hope would be that would be covered, because I believe it would be a prudent use of some of that funding that Allegheny may receive from the state in that $2 million mark. That would be my hope.
If not, we could pay for it with county funds and get that money reimbursed out of the $2 million to go back into the county. Is that a possibility?
If, if, there's a big if right here. If it is an approved use of a portion of that $2 million, it would be a reimbursement anyway.
Okay.
So, you know, if it is not an approved use of that money, then I'll have to come back and say, we talked with them, it's not approved, and here's some thoughts on how we get there. But I would like to work under the assumption at this point, that it is an approved use until I'm notified differently.
I know that during the budget process, we had no idea that this was coming, so there's no money set aside for that study. The second part of a question is, when whoever does this study, will they be consulting with the sheriff's department, the judges, the clerk of court, the commissioners, or you, as to recommendations?
It would be all-inclusive, and what I would emphasize on that is, yes, there would be a, you know, a meeting of everyone to gather ideas and discuss it, but, and I'll say this, you know, there are something, there may be a lot of thoughts on how to use it and how it could be spent, but ultimately, those decisions are going to come down to this governing body, because you are the recipient of those funds. And, you know, there may be times when you're going to have to weigh this thought versus this thought to see how they mesh together or can be combated, but I do think absolutely it will be a joint venture, but I will not be mistaken in saying, there may be some decisions that have to be made by this governing body, because there may not be enough to accommodate each of those components into this study or into the project itself.
Be all-inclusive of people that are daily involved in the judicial system.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Do you ask any questions? Hear a motion? Ms. Carter, the authority of RF, if... Motion here, second.
Sir?
Second. Any further discussion?
Got one question.
Yes, sir.
What I will do, what I would do is, one, is I would begin communication with the state to find out precisely what is allowed within those fundings. If the facility study is one of those, then I would take that and I would solicit an RFQ to qualified firms to at least have them submit, you know, their abilities, their experience, the things that go along with that. So, one, we know if that study will be covered, and if so, two, how we go about looking at those firms and determining which ones we want to begin negotiations or discussions
Any further discussion? And manager comments? Start off with Mark over.
Okay, I'll be brief. I really don't have anything but to just kind of say what I've already said. We have several good things coming up here over the next six months. We have our budget that we'll begin working on, we have some additional projects, if you think back, we've really gotten some projects kind of off the shelf over the last year. These are good problems to have. We've got the ability now for another courthouse, we've got the ability to fix up one of our facilities. So, this project management, this project situation, both of these that we're in, these are good problems to have. And crazy enough, I'm looking forward to those, because I enjoy that kind of stuff. But I just think we have a really bright future ahead of us, so I'm thankful for that. So, thank you.
Mr. Commerce?
Commissioner Mark Evans. Don't have a lot, just, I know I have another... Too caught up in all the hustle and bustle of the season and enjoy what it, for what it is. So, I think it's violent season open today, it's everybody go crazy, jump in, and then sure enough, go crazy. Encourage folks to look at... To a good... Manager office and all of your department heads, a lot of, as you mentioned, positive
I'd like to congratulate the town Chamber of Commerce on the parade that we had, it was a big success. There again, there's, I don't think there's any trouble with keeping the schools going, as many children as I saw. The parade route was just jam-packed full of them. We had a good day weather-wise and a good turnout. We had a hospital dedication a couple days ago, and that was very nice. There was a big crowd there. I think that new hospital wings and the way they've consolidated some of the buildings is a plus for the county. Want to be sure and wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, the upcoming holidays. And on a note, email that I got a while ago, that I think that really it's going to affect parts of, some people in Allegheny County, Toyota Motor, North American, announced they will be building a major-scale, major-scale battery manufacturing plant in Greensboro. It's going to employ, to start with, 1,750 people. The investment is $1.29 billion. Supposed to be one of the largest investments by a manufacturer in North Carolina. And I'm happy to say that the community colleges will be helping train some of those people for those jobs. That's a big part of what the community colleges do, is train people in the workforce. And it's my opinion, some people from here will, hopefully, may get a job down there, but that's something to, I think, really be proud of. And I go back to, I think, our October meeting about this, trying to get a price on the paving at the fairgrounds, if we could, especially with our budget sessions being moved up a little sooner, if we could get that over. Appreciate it, but to everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and I think Michael Carter ought to lead us in doing some jumping jacks tonight. I don't know if he feels like it.
Thank you, Bob. Mr. John.
I just, I had a few things that I wanted to cover, to be quite frank with you. I'm Reese, kind of preclude that right now. Like to congratulate the county manager and his staff on the audit findings. I don't want to steal your thunder, I know the auditors are going to be here on December 24th, but suffice it to say that you've given us good news, and it is a reflection on the professionalism of you and your staff. And then we will celebrate on the 20th. I have been approached a few times concerning the telephone RFP vote. Unfortunately, the wording in the Allegheny News does not reflect the actual process for this. We didn't drop anybody. The legislature of the state of North Carolina gives up its power very reluctantly. It will stipulate things that we as county commissioners and other government agencies have to follow. One of the things that is stipulated by North Carolina statute is when we must go out for bids. Not only does it stipulate when we must go out for bids, it tells us what we have to bid, it gives us monetary amounts that is requirement for an informal or formal bid. The telephone RFP met that requirement, so we went out for bids. Two people, two entities submitted bids. Now, North Carolina statute also says, we must accept the lowest bid unless we have a reasonable doubt that they can perform. Now, we went through this with the food contract at the, for the sheriff's department at the jail. We have no choice. It is very clear that unless we had a reasonable assumption that they would not be able to perform, we had to accept the lowest bid. By not doing so, places this county in jeopardy, because the lowest bidder could sue us. We couldn't say that they couldn't perform, because oddly enough, the winning company, Ideacom, provides the telephone service with internet to Baptist Hospital. And guess who was installing their equipment at Allegheny Memorial Hospital the day we took the vote? Ideacom. They also provide the voice-over IP telephone service for Camp Lejeune. You're looking at over 50,000 population with a ton of acreage, Cherry Point, New River, Alexander County, a number of counties, I believe they said Forsyth. So, that took that away. Our hands are tied. Now, if you've got a complaint, please take it to the State of North Carolina General Assembly, to the legislatures down there. Loosen the reins on us, and we might... Loosen the reins on us, and we might be able to do something. We look at Skyline, Skybest is a little old bitty mom and pop company, and that would have been true in 1959 whenever we first got our rotary telephone phones in the county, and we actually started taking the telephone lines outside of the city limits. Bobby and I can remember it, whenever you dialed the daggone dial and you received an operator that was on the pull-plug switchboard, Thelma Jordan was one of the operators sitting above Northwestern Bank. Well, that was then. Skyline is the eighth-largest cooperative telephone system in the nation. They're not a small mom and pop. They had the opportunity to submit their bid, and we looked at them, and that's the way it's got to be. Either that or we violate North Carolina statute. So I like to keep things local. My father was a local businessman. I realize the impact whenever you take those dollars outside of the county. I lived it, listened to it, but whenever you get right down to it, our hands are tied. We've got to follow North Carolina statute. Other than that, I'd like to wish everyone a happy holiday season. I know we're going to be back in here on December the 20th for the good news from our auditors, but it did enjoy the parade. I was on my campaign platform for the parade. Unfortunately, it didn't make the paper. But then again, when do you expect to see a manure spreader on the front page? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Someone previously mentioned our new hospital expansion opened up this week. I went over for a tour, and it's a beautiful facility. We're very fortunate to have that here in our county now. So looks like a totally different place over there. Very proud of it. I just want to speak briefly about the vote that we took over the individual freedom over personal vaccination status. I believe that the vaccine has saved lives. You know, I believe that people getting vaccinated is going to be one thing to help us get over COVID. I'll be the first one to tell you, I've had my vaccine. It's a personal choice. Along with that personal choice, I don't believe that you can, as a free American, you can mandate people to have a medication put into their arm. Maybe if you live in a communist state, you can, but I think that that's one of the cornerstones of our freedom, is being able to make choices like that. So that's why I voted the way that I did tonight because, you know, everybody has to make their own personal decision about that vaccine. So I don't believe that you should have to choose your job over getting a jab in the arm.
Thank you. Well, I don't have anything much to add. It's already been covered by, we'd just like to touch base on the hospital that Bobby and Michelle both mentioned about the ceremony. It's a very nice ceremony over the other day, and we've got a lot to be proud of in our hospital. That's going to be a big asset to the county for years to come, and I think as in there open for business, it's more on the new wing, I believe. Anyone want to comment on the Chamber of Commerce Christmas parade? That was a real nice parade, real pretty, and I know they've done a lot of work, and somebody done a lot of footwork to put all that together, Lisa Bottom and her crew. And certainly appreciate the rescue squad and what they mean to Allegheny County. We can't operate without them. With that being said. Request for closed session under General Statute 143-318.11.a/3. Consultant attorney and six personnel. And include April Ham. Hear a motion?
Moved.
Motion here, second.
Second.